Good evening, it's 7:00 and welcome to the December Wabashaw City Council Meeting. I'd like to open tonight a little differently. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, but let's have a moment of silence for George H.W., our 41st President of the United States.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And moving right on with a little change in the agenda. We have a gentleman with us that has served the city of Wabashaw for 20 years as a councilperson. And I asked Steve if he'd like to say anything tonight, and he's kind of quiet, but maybe he will. Steve?
Well, I was just trying to think of my first council meeting, and I think it was January of 1995, because I was, I got on for eight years and then talked one of my friends into getting on in my place, and he did that for four years and decided it wasn't for him. And then I ran again and was on for 12 more years.
Okay.
So, it's been good, and, you know, a lot of people have asked me, you know, how could you put up with it all that time, but it really wasn't that bad. And, I mean, you take a little bit of guff, but most of the time you can shrug it off. So, it's been, it's been a good run, but it's time to get out.
Okay. And did you bring a guest tonight?
I brought my wife along tonight, and after 240 meetings, this is the first one she's been to.[152.76][152.76](Laughter and applause.)
Good job. All right, on with the agenda, we have room for a guest speaker, no guest speaker that I'm aware of, public comments. At this time, I'd like to invite anyone who would want to visit addressable to come to the podium and do so. Seeing a long line, we will move on.
Is this the first time we thank you guys? Is this a good time to do that, or at the end, or how do you feel about them?
Yes.
This is a good time?
Yes.
All right, well, then, I'm going to get up here right now. I'm Amy Kloski, and I just really wanted to be here tonight to thank both Steve and Rollin for your amazing service, and it's a lot of work in a small town, and not a lot of people are willing to get out there and give of themselves, and thank you both so much for your dedication and hard work. Really appreciate you both.
Amy, and you're doing a great job for the city of Wabashaw, so thank you.
You're so welcome.
All right. Any other public comments? Then I would like to recognize three per audience. Tim Walrich, who will be a council member in a few days. Mayor-elect Emily, who will be mayor in a few days. And my friend, who I've gotten to know a little bit, Danny Schmidt, who's mayor of Kellogg. Welcome. I just have a couple of comments that I'd like to make. This will be my last council meeting after '98, Steve, so not up to you. There's a person in the room I would like to say thank you to, and that's Ruby White. Ruby has probably been to all '98 of the city council meetings that I've been part of. Ruby, every time she comes, she risks a bit, but she never complains. Once in a while, we'll walk together, walk our dogs together in the park, and she's always positive about the direction of Wabashaw and the people who are serving. So, thank you, Ruby. My partner, Mickey, is on a cruise in the middle of the Caribbean, so I'll thank her later.[321.77][321.77](Laughter.)
Mayor, you should ask Ruby, how long has she been doing this? I think, I'm not sure, but Ruby, how long have you been doing this?
I've almost forgotten.[333.53][333.53](Laughter.) I think, I think I started in about, about 1985. It's been a long time.
Yeah. Thank you for that, Steve.
Make sure you write yourself up in the paper, Ruby.
Any changes or additions to the agenda you'd like to make tonight? If not, a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Committee reports. John is not here. Jeff, anything to share with us?
The trucks are hauling sand up Bruger Valley.
Okay, how's it going?
It's pretty busy today, coming home from work, so.
Okay. So, that's part of the program, isn't it? Brian?
Nothing tonight.
Make something up.
Thank you for serving.
You're welcome, Brian. Dino?
Well, I'll just do what Brian said, thanks Steve and you for serving. Ruby, thanks for, um, the Christmas lights look nice. That's about it for me.
The Christmas lights around town really do look nice, don't they?
Yeah, they do.
Steve?
The Utility Commission met tonight, and outside of normal business, the only thing we had was, I guess, the equivalent of a public hearing, and it was an informational meeting about the Wellhead Protection Plan.
Okay.
And no one came, and so they must think we're doing a good job of protecting our domestic water service.
Questions? Craig?
Planning Commission didn't meet last month, so don't have anything to report there.
And neither did the Port Authority meet, so a little late there. We always save the best for last, Tony. Just so you don't think I'm angry with you.
Park Board met, so we had two members re-up their service out of three. Larry Utstein, Gary Sikora, and then Jen Walls is going to be resigning off the Park Board. So, we're going to have an opening, and we'll be scouting for people for that. We discussed a couple of changes in the campground rules, nothing major. Park Board renewals, I went over that. Isaac Walton, ADA improvements, we changed the future park plan to accommodate some of that. Bike path lighting, we approved a few projects there, and then we discussed community gardens a little bit, and the Street Commission did not meet today, so that's all I got.
Questions?
And thanks for working with you guys, too. Time to enjoy life now and kick back and...
The tradition, you know, you're doing a great job getting that snow out of there. So, you and your team.
So, if there are people out there that want to be on the Park Board, do they send a letter to the administrator?
Yeah, come into the City Hall, we actually have an application now, and they go through that process. So, we're going to put them all together and put a solicitation out there for those spots.
Gene? Been a little busy the last few days, huh?
Yeah, yeah, very busy. Couple things, thank you, Steve, for the year that I've been here. I appreciate everything you've done for the city, you know, and mayor, too. It's nice to get to, you know, know you a little bit and stuff. A couple of things, I want to say a thank you to Marnie Bush. She has donated some things to the Amlin. We have new furniture down there now. She's donated a sofa, love seat, and a chair, end table, a lot of blankets and pillows. I'll have more of a detailed report next month, once she's finished, so, but I just wanted to send out a public thank you to her. So, she's, she stopped in the station one day and seen how the people were staying down there, and she said, "It's not allowed anymore," so. But she didn't want to offer her house either, but... But, other than that, just a couple little reports. Last month, we only had 28 calls for service. It was a slower month for us. 25 transports, two, or three of them refused transports. So, we had four transfers, eight to St. Elizabeth's, and three that had to be turned down. Don't know the details of the turn downs at this point, but the only other thing I have is cardiac monitors will be in at the end of the month. We mount now, what you guys have approved, sorry. Sorry about that. So, the mounts are in, and then we'll be doing training after the first year on those cardiac monitors that we had ordered, that you guys have approved. And then we're going to be doing some one-on-one with the staff down there. We've got a couple of SMART goals that we want to set for the state, for the service and individuals, so we're going to be starting those actually this month. And then we have two new hires down there also, they'll be starting this month, so you see, one of them I know is Rachel Mona, she's a Wabashaw native, goes to school in Iowa right now. So, and then the other one, I cannot pronounce his name, but we call him Dietz. He's on EODA service, and then he also works for the U of M as a neuroscientist. So, he'll be working down there, too. So, but, and that's about all I have, any reports right now. So, any questions?
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Chad?
I think the theme of the night is thanking folks for service, so I am going to actually defer my first update to Sue, who's going to present a little something from the staff to you, Mayor.
Mayor Hall. The city has decided to go with a plaque that has a picture of all of our beautiful employees, and so we got out on a cold day and hit a picture taken, and it says, "Presented to Rollin Hall in appreciation of your service and dedication, and thank you from all the city staff." It's been a pleasure working with you.
Same here, Sue.
And the pleasure of presenting Mr. Schmidt with the very same. Thank you, Steve, for your years of service. It's got, again, all of us beautiful people here, free to look at every night before you go to bed. So, it's been great to work with you, at least the five years that I've been here. You've been invaluable to me and to the city and to the Utilities Commission as well, so thank you very much for your service, sir. You're welcome.
Can I just open up so I can slide a different picture?
Okay, getting on to items, little update. First of all, if you remember, we were going to have the big CORE meeting, I think we talked about that after the, or during the last meeting, but that was postponed at the request of the CORE until after the New Year, so we really haven't done anything there. We are aware of the letter that went out, looking for willing sellers, and that doesn't change our plan at this point. If they find a willing seller, we'll look at that and go from there, but the city still has their plan that they forwarded up there, that we distributed, and that's where we're at at this point. The second piece, the other thing is Craig and I have had a few meetings with the county and our engineer as well. The county's got some money to finish up the County 30 resurfacing in front of Dick's Fresh Market there, and there's some work going on through a project that Emily spearheaded for Greater Minnesota, and we've been working with an individual from the University of Minnesota to talk about different designs and maybe perhaps increasing that culvert to a bridge or some type of navigable channel underneath where it goes through, so something we're looking at. We've had several meetings on it already, and we kind of, we're kind of behind the eight ball, so these meetings will probably be a little more frequent, like we've had, so.
Are you guys still looking at sidewalk in that area?
Yes, sir. Yep. In fact, we're going to look at different designs, too. Which side, how to get it underneath, maybe, that type of stuff. Yeah, that's what I got.
Questions? All right, thank you, Gene. Don't forget the holiday train Sunday night over at, what's that?
Bruger Park?
Gambia Railroad Crossing.
Yeah, Bruger Park. 6:15. They're in Winona at 4:00 and right up to Wabashaw, and then, folks, it's Hastings. So, this is a very important stop that we are able to share in every year. I will go to Winona and ride to Wabashaw and schmooze them all the way to make, do what I can to get them to come back next year, because they drop off a nice check every year. Moving on, consent agenda. And tonight is to approve the November 18 regular council meeting and November 16 special meeting for canvass the election results, 2019 annual licenses, resolution designated annual polling places, temporary on-sale liquor license application for St. Felix Church, and the warrants. We have a motion to accept the warrant, or the consent agenda.
Go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, passed unanimously. No public hearing this evening will get into the general business. We've got two or three items of general business, should go quickly, because maybe we don't realize it, but between meetings, there's an awful lot of work that gets done, and by the time it gets to a meeting, a lot of that work, Danny, is done. So, let's start with the police union contract. Chad?
We actually just received the markup version late this afternoon, so we're not going to look for approval at this meeting, but what we would like to do is discuss if there's any issues with the draft that was out there, or any questions that we can answer from what was forwarded to, forwarded to the group in the, or what was attached to the meeting agenda. So, we don't actually have the final, final yet. We'll probably 12:31 bill pay meeting, assuming there's no substantive changes from the, from our legal team. I did a cursory review of it, and the details, Jeff, that we had worked out as a group were accurate in there, besides a couple of small little changes I asked for, and they, they made those, so. Does anyone have any questions on the, on the agreement, as it, the draft agreement, I should say?
So, just to clarify, this, this agreement will go from retroactive from January 1, 2018 up till December 31, 2019?
Yes, sir.
So, next, next year will be contract?
Will be, yeah. We'll be talking fairly soon after this is ratified, I'm sure. And this does not include, again, any retroactive pay for 2018. This is set for 2019 going forward. I think the biggest point, just like in any, most or any union contract, was the discussion was, we came in at the lower percentile of the max range for area and like-sized departments, so we looked at that information, adjusted that. We were near the middle on starting, but we did increase that just a little bit, and there's been a notion going on for several years here to ensure we're not just a hiring ground and a training ground for officers, and that we can, after we spend, because it is a lengthy and expensive training process for any officer to go through, that we can retain them for several years to actually recoup some of our investment. So, the table that is in there is, is what we had agreed to, obviously needs council approval, but...
Okay, any further questions? If not, let's move on to the schedule.
If anybody does have any questions after this, just go ahead and forward them to me, and I'll address them prior to the 12:31.
Next item is 2019 fee schedule, and Tony, I see your name on that, so do you want to come back up?
I will actually cover that.
Okay.
I got it. We, we've maintained a fee schedule for several years, and we've looked at the different items for which we either charge for or somehow receive revenue for. One reason we do this is that we have to have a published fee schedule if we were ever to become a disaster area from FEMA, therefore, we can recover our costs for time. If Tony's crew is using the front-end loader, there's a cost for that, for his people, all that type of stuff. That's how those reimbursements come to municipalities, counties, and what have you. We also looked, as a result of the budget retreat back in August, we looked at the revenue and the fees for the parks, the campground, really anything that would be under the purview of the Park, Park Board, and the Park Board reviewed those fees and recommended the increases that are in there today. Now, the, the fees that are shown in the yellow in the far column, if there's nothing there, there's no, there is nothing being requested for an increase, it's still the existing fee that was, that was there. So, what we're looking for is, this needs a motion approving the fee schedule, and this will be what we use that guides us through 2019. And again, we can even revise it in 2019 if we find something's out of whack, or something becomes more expensive, or vice versa, so.
The motion?
Second.
Motion's been made in second to adopt the fee schedule. Any further discussion or questions?
Question. About an hour before I came up here, I stopped down at the Super, or whatever it's called now. One of the questions was, do we have a fee schedule for picnic tables and stuff? I don't think we rent those out, do we?
No. Lot of times, we'll tell people to grab them if they, we don't move them around.
Okay.
We don't do that anymore.
I was unaware, and I didn't see it here, so. That's it.
Okay, we have motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, passed unanimously. Moving on to item number three, and we have met twice already to discuss the 2019 budget and the levy, so is there a motion to approve the 2019 budget levy?
We need it.
Yeah, we should ask for public comment.
We should open a hearing, open the public hearing.
It's a hearing.
Truth and taxation hearing.
Okay, truth and taxation hearing tonight. I just reminded that we're having a truth and taxation meeting tonight, which asks for a public hearing. First of all, we'll get some staff input. Who would like to do that?
Yep. Going back to September, if you remember, the first budget that we presented for council and the public, the levy was at, the high end of the levy was set at 6.5%. So, those of us that received our tax statements, our proposed tax statements for 2019 here within the last couple of weeks, that reflects that 6.5% number. So, where we go from here will have an impact on the city line that you, in those taxes that were on the county, that county form that was mailed to you. Since our retreat, the only change, since our retreat last week, the only change was a request from the Wabashaw Main Street for $6,000, and I did include that here in the planning budget under the HPC department. We have annually allocated $3,000 there for training and additional expenses for HPC, and that number was increased to $9,000 to account for that $6,000 from the Main Street crew. So, with all that being said, and all the changes we've discussed for the public, we do have a much more economical health insurance offering that went through here. I'd like to thank staff for, we had a lot of work to do in a very short amount of time, and that included everybody that, that took the insurance, had to research it, get it all in by a due date, but we, we got that in, and that was a significant driver in a decrease to what we are presenting right now of 3.6% of a levy increase for 2019.
Questions? Okay, then at 7:25, 27, 26 and a half, open to the public. Does anyone in the council room want to address the truth and taxation? Again, seeing a long line of no one, I'll close 30 seconds later. Now, we'll go for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To approve the 2019...
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Discussion further?
What does, what does the percentage end up being, then?
3.6% for 2019.
I want to talk about the Main Street, $6,000, a little bit more. First of all, if we decide that that's what we want to do, I think I would really appreciate if that was pulled out and put a separate line item under the miscellaneous, instead of going into the HPC slush fund, or whatever you want to call it. And also, why, why, you know, I thought we were doing a good job, you know, we, we got the Chamber of Commerce to go from 20 grand a year to 15 grand a year, and now the Main Street group, which is basically doing the same thing, now we're back up to 21 grand a year going to these private nonprofits. It just doesn't seem like the right way to be doing this. I don't, the Main Street, and last year, you know, in fact, I probably made a mistake last year, because I probably made the motion or seconded the motion to give $4,000 last year as a seed money so they could upgrade their membership. So, now this year, they come back for $6,000. I mean, when I've reading about this Main Street stuff, you guys are supposed to be operating with the Chamber of Commerce and doing fundraisers and being self-sufficient, instead of coming to, I mean, you just had something in the paper, a bunch of column inches on the Great Main Street Program, and you said, "The Main Street Program reduces the burden on local government." How is it reducing the burden on local government when you're coming back to ask for $6,000 this year? And then, now, what do we know, next year, what are you going to come back and ask for? $10,000? I'm not...
Well, when you look at, the Main Street Program is part of a national program that goes on. There are 11 cities in the state of Minnesota that are part of that program. They're aimed primarily at small, all of those 11 cities fund their, that Main Street Program.
I asked you that last week, or last meeting, about, give me the data, show me what contributions the local cities actually make to their Main Street Program. I didn't get any data, so...
You did, you're right.
So, how do we, how do we know? I mean, I looked in Winona, I don't, I couldn't find anything in Winona's budget where they're contributing to the Main Street Program. I saw that they work pretty tightly with the Chamber of Commerce. I couldn't find anything, I don't know if Lake City's in it, but I didn't...
Lake City's not in it. I don't, and it could be hidden in their budget somewhere else, I don't know, but what we...
But why should the taxpayers be paying for this? You guys are supposed to be self-sufficient.
Because what we're doing is starting a program to enhance the downtown area, and so...
Isn't that part of what the Chamber of Commerce is doing, too, trying to enhance the business environment?
They're trying to enhance the business environment. We're trying to enhance the downtown area that's a little bit from business. We are including the businesses in it, and a lot of the businesses profit from what we do. And so, we, we did present some of the things that we've done, like the architectural help that we provided for, for businesses downtown. You can get a free architectural design of your facade if you want, and we offer that. It comes with an architect comes down from the university and can design your building for you with regard to the historic context. So, that's free. We've had one business take advantage of it, another business is, is looking at it very seriously. So, that's saving those businesses some money. We also had, with the Adopt a Planner Program, that was something where they're out now, they're enhancing the downtown area, makes it a better shopping experience, makes it a better quality of life experience. Maybe you don't like it, but a lot of people do, and those have all been paid for by donations from people. So, in fact, we gathered over 10,000, no, not 10,000, we gathered over... So, in fact, we gathered over ten thousand, no, not ten thousand, we gathered over, oh, it's just about ten thousand, yeah, it's twenty planters, and it was about four hundred seventy-five a planter. So, a little about eight thousand dollars, seven or eight thousand. So, that kinda demonstrates what the community is willing to put in out of their own pocket to do this program. They like it. So, we're providing something that people like.
Well, but you guys, but the Main Street organization should be self-sufficient, okay?
We are a five oh one C three, so we'll accept your donation anytime you wanna send us a check. But that's just starting up. We just got the five oh one C three, whatever, we just got that, just this last.
I mean, I mean, if we give you six thousand dollars, I mean, you read the Main Street webpage, they say for every dollar contributed, the local area gets twenty-three dollars in, in benefits. So, you're gonna, you're telling us we're gonna get a hundred.
National Eagle Center says.
We're gonna, we're gonna get a hundred and forty thousand dollars benefit from the six thousand dollars we give you.
I don't think we said that.
Well, that's what, that's what's on the website for the, how beneficial this program is.
Okay.
I, I just don't, I think you guys should be self-sufficient. It was our right giving seed money last year, but raise your own money now for going forward.
Well, we're improving the city, so you can look at it whatever way you want. I guess we think that it is, if it's an improvement to the city and it helps the city businesses, it helps the city people make a better place to live, I think the city would wanna invest in that. And that's, that's my view.
What was the grant, excuse me?
That's also my view. It's if, if, if somebody comes to the city and sees that the downtown looks nice, that it's, that's, it's inviting, it's, it's, there's plants, the weeds are taken care of, all this stuff, and if it sells one building to start up a new business, I think we've, we're a winner. If it, I know a couple of individuals that have come to Wabashaw just to visit the Eagle Center and bought houses. If this does that, that's six thousand dollars a well, a well investment in my eyes. And I hear from the public all the time how bad our downtown is looking, and now it's looking better, so, you know? Seems like to me that the people I talk to, anyway, are, are okay with spending six grand.
Craig, what's the grant money that you received?
Well, we, the grant money we're about to receive in twenty nineteen will be about twenty thousand dollars for the artists on Main Street. And so, we'll have some ten and fifteen artists putting out some art on Main Street for people to enjoy, and that will be totally paid for by a grant. Some of it, it'll be administered by the Main Street program, so we do get some money for administration from that, so we're getting some of that. There are costs to have an organization like this do these things. Right now, we're all volunteers, but we still have administrative costs. We have, we put out a brochure for people to read about us and to also find out what, how, what it costs to, to join and be a donating member, and that, those things cost money to print, so there's always some cost of administration that has to be covered. So, that's, the artists on Main Street will, will give us some money to administer that program. Plus, all of the programs that we started this year, the Adopt a Planter program, those furnishings that go inside those planters are gonna be changed periodically, and we've already funded for that. So, all of the two thousand eighteen programs go forward, get repeated in two thousand nineteen, plus we add that one.
How much money are you gonna ask for next year, the next budget meeting?
I'll let you know when we draft up our budget.
Who's the treasurer of that group anyways?
I am the treasurer.
Oh, that doesn't, sounds a little strange, but, okay.
Jeff, I ask some of the same questions that you're doing, and I think they're appropriate. Thing that tipped me was when, last year, we, I looked at it as a four thousand dollar investment, and I think we're talking about a thirty thousand dollar return on that four.
But not to the city. We don't know where the, where the thirty thousand goes. That's not coming back to the city.
Not the city government.
Right.
Right. Yeah, well, there's.
It's a money hole.
Not to the general account, you're right.
It's, it's not a money hole, it's an investment in your, in your community.
Well, you guys could, like I said, you guys should be self-sufficient. Raise money, go around, raise money, work with the Chamber of Commerce, have events to raise money for your Main Street program instead of having, like I said, I'm, I'm seeing now, you're gonna be coming back next year for ten grand, the next year, you'll come back for fifteen grand. It's not gonna stop.
If it's a success, you may wanna invest in it, but we're, we're seeking donations as much as we can, we're selling memberships, that's out there, and that program takes a while to take hold, and people wanna see what they're investing in. So, what we're trying to do is show them something now, and it takes a little bit of money to get the whole program off the ground. And it may be self-sufficient, that's certainly our goal, but we'll work towards that. We'll take that, you can, and consider it very well.
Further discussion? We have a motion in a second to approve the two thousand nineteen budget. Let's roll this one.
Okay, Sala?
No.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yes.
And Falkum?
Yes.
That, motion passes by majority. We have to set a special meeting for year-end warrants, and I think that you've picked.
Tentative date to consider. If Thursday, the twenty-seventh works for at least four members, this is where we attempt to get every last bill through.
Thursday, the twenty-seventh?
Yes, sir. At nine AM.
Nine AM? Barely getting out of bed.
I can make it, I, I'm pretty sure.
I can make it.
You could?
I hope. I could do it in a pinch, but.
Okay.
It's right in the middle of the workday, so.
I can make it. We got three?
I can make it.
Okay.
And I possibly can make it, so.
Okay. We'll, let us know if something changes, and we have to do some recruiting.
Call me the day before.
Yeah. Rosie, write that down.
Okay, and Tim and Emily, you better get your schedule out, but you're gonna set a January ninth, two thousand nineteen meeting date. And again, that one is.
Yeah, we can, oops, sorry. The first is, the first is the first Tuesday, which was, has been, historically been our meetings. Councilperson Woodley and I have talked about, our children have a lot of Tuesday night events, of which one we're missing tonight, and we would like to consider the second Monday of the month, and we'd like to consider a six o'clock start time, and maybe we could kick that off with the January meeting if that works. Do we have to have them in place, or how does that work?
We'll do it at that meeting.
So, who's the acting mayor until then?
Well, Emily will. We will, we will.
She's just not following that.
We will start the meeting with the oath of.
Okay, but the second, third, fourth, fifth?
Are you talking on Monday, every, every councilman for, for the next four years?
Look at changing it.
Yeah, yeah. Mondays.
Mondays no good for you?
Tuesdays and Thursdays are the only days that ever work for me, so.
Tuesdays and Thursdays? Or Mondays, Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Just Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Just Tuesdays and Thursdays? Well, let's set the January one and then talk about it. So, what works for, for folks in January?
Move it.
Is there anything that doesn't work?
Wednesday, Thursday would be fine, the second and the third for me.
Second works for you?
Dean, you can't do Wednesday, though?
Wednesdays don't work.
I can't do Monday, Wednesday, or Thursday, or Fridays. Just Tuesdays and Thursdays.
So, if we go to the next week?
We can just go for the eighth? Does the eighth work?
Yeah, I don't have any in front of me, but.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as it's Tuesday.
Yes, Tuesday, the eighth.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll set that for Tuesday, January eighth, two thousand thirteen.
Craig will open that meeting.
You'll be the, go to Craig and.
Yeah.
When seven?
Yeah, we'll go for seven, go from there.
That concludes our general business. I'd like to recognize our donations. Ruby, and you do a nice job every month putting the names of the people in, and tonight we have the library. Twenty dollars in memory of Joan Gilland from Dave Kennebeck, and Bob and Bonnie Isaiments, twenty dollars in memory of Gilland, Mildred Getchman, twenty dollars in memory of Joan Gilland, Judy Knows, ten dollars in memory of Joan Gilland, eighty dollars in honor of Berkeley Anderson, sixth birthday by family and friends. Berkeley gives that money to the library. Dallas and Joanne Franzen, library, a hundred dollars. Thank you, Dallas and Joanne. Five hundred dollars from Anonymous, that person shows up regularly. Pool Pass Program, nine thousand bucks from the Wabashaw-Kellige Area Community Foundation. Christmas decorations, a hundred dollars by C. Jean Johnstead, hundred dollar Christmas decorations from River Crossing Enterprise, Jerry and Mary Arns, hundred dollars for Christmas decorations, twenty-five dollars from Tony Smith, twenty dollars from Darlene Mullen, twenty-five dollars from Janet Williams, City Hall chimney work, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty, uh, six cents, Sorensen Restoration donated labor and materials, and pool pavers, five hundred and seventy dollars, Sorensen Restoration donated labor. Motion to receive the donations? So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Merry Christmas.
Who's gonna do it?
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're legal.
Do I leave this or take it?
Yeah, leave the, leave this, right, Sue?
No, she said take it.
Sue, do we wanna leave this first? She didn't say.
Everyone's invited for coffee and cookies and cake and conversation.